So I think if you can just bear with us because we are going to do breakout groups and what we'll try to do is take some groups to other rooms so that there's just enough space. So those of you in the back are welcome, hello. I won't make you stand for long, so maybe just for a few minutes and then I'm going to ask for patience as we manage logistics based on what everybody here wants to talk about. Sound OK? Can you hear me clearly in the back? OK, great. I am going to hand over to the Wikimedia Foundation Board Chair and then I will come back and be logistics oriented.
Okay. Shanee was supposed to join online?
She's on the AI call.
Ah, the panel, the panel was over. OK.
Maybe can you tell us when she joins so that we can pause and Menar wave at us when Shanee joins and then we can just invite her at that point.
OK. The open conversations with the Board of Trustees is hosted by the Community Affairs Committee of the Board of Trustees, so we just wanted the Chair Shanee to give a few words of welcome. So, welcome everyone. I'm just going to give very short things that maybe all of you should just hear before we are actually going to go into separate conversations. Each table kind of has like a separate topic, so we can have more people having conversations. The logistics would be all on Mariana based on the demand, so to say. So we just wanted to not bore you with a lot of details. Tomorrow we are going to have lightning talks with board candidates. There would be board elections coming up soon, so I just wanted you to make sure if you're here, online or offline, you would find time to listen to the lightning talks of the candidates. And also, one another point of communication is that Wikimedia Foundation launched Wikimedia Foundation Bulletin as a communication centrally, trying to communicate centrally from the Wikimedia Foundation's in the Wikimedia projects. So if you haven't checked it, please subscribe so the Wikimedia Foundation can know that it helps or not. This is an experiment. If you show that you are subscribed and you want this information to be coming in that way, that would be the best, like vote with your, I don't know, with your talk pages. And, oh, Shanee, if you are online, you can speak.
Hello, everyone. Just wanted to say hello. I'm really missing everyone this year. I was really looking forward to this Wikimania, but circumstances have not allowed me to participate physically with flights canceled due to the situation here in Israel. I'm really, really happy to host everyone for these open conversations with the Board of Trustees. We are usually doing these open conversations every quarter and once every year is always saved for Wikimania. We have a lot to discuss as a movement this year and I'm hoping that you find this platform fruitful and a safe space to engage with either online or in the room with us and we remain open to continued conversations after Wikimania and I hope you enjoy. I'm handing over to Nat. Just because I'm not there, it doesn't make sense for me to facilitate, so thank you, Nat, in advance for taking my job to do that.
Thank you. I just wanted to also say that we had project birthdays in July and August, Arabic Wikipedia, South Azerbaijani Wikipedia, Wikibooks, English Wikibooks, and Indonesian Wikibooks. So, and now with that, we are having tables. We're not serving food, not even cookies, but we are going to serve topics and Mariana is going to read you the menu.
Yep. I know some of you joined. We're going to just be in this crowded space for a few minutes and then we will find space for everybody. It is going to require some flexibility on logistics because we want to be demand-oriented to have tables for the things people want to talk about, so it may just require a few minutes of logistics. I wanted to do two things. One is to explain the proposed format for the session and two, say a few things about the Movement Charter, which is an assumption that some of you are here for that purpose. So I will do both of those things and then we'll move into some of the conversation spaces. If I can have the next slide. If I can maybe just ask the trustees listed on the slide to stand so that we know who the members of the board are. And I know that the room is quite crowded, but maybe if we could just go around, some of you are known to others and some of you are new, just maybe to quickly introduce yourselves by name. And Louise, I'm going to start with you and then we'll work our way around the room.
Just our name?
Yeah.
Louise Ben-Cutimilio. Let's see around.
Victoria Dorudina.
Thank you for passing the mic around to make that faster.
I'm Kathy Collins.
Jimmy Wales.
Raju Narisetti.
Darish Meenak.
Loden Solazam.
Rosie Stevenson, good night.
Great. Thank you all. Thank you. Trustees can be seated. Next slide. We have identified six potential topics for discussion and allocated trustees to those. If there is a different interest in topics, we may shift things around. The first is on the Movement Charter and what I will say briefly is that's really a conversation about the charter itself. The Foundation has issued an open proposal on the areas of funds distribution, product and tech, and the affiliate landscape. Each of those topics has their own table, as you'll see from the slide, as well as a table responding to emerging threats around disinformation, censorship, and litigation. There is Table Five, which is really focused on the financial model and revenue and financing of our movement, online fundraising, Wikimedia Enterprise, the Endowment. We have the community trustees from the Endowment that are here with us as well, Patricio and Phoebe, thank you. So what I might do without giving you more is ask for a bit of a show of hands on interest in those topics and then we'll say a few things and see. If you think that you're interested in talking about the Movement Charter, the Charter itself and not the experiments, would you raise your hand just so I could get a sense of the room? OK. A hand. OK, thank you. Thank you. If you think you're interested in talking about the global funds distribution and the open proposal on a committee to help imagine that, can I see a show of hands? OK, that looks like about one table. If you think that you're interested in talking about the product and tech, both priorities and the Product and Tech Advisory Council, which is another open proposal. OK, that looks like about a table. And if you think you're interested in talking about the financial model, revenue streams of the movement. And if you think you're interested in talking about disinformation, censorship, litigation issues. OK, that doesn't quite feel like everybody. Oh, I'm sorry. What did I miss? Oh, the affiliate strat, thank you very much, sorry. Affiliate Strategy and Hubs? OK. I think the dilemma we have is it feels like there's one table per topic, but a lot more people in this room, so maybe, maybe what we'll do is we'll pick two topics and have a group move to another room so that just that we have space. Does that sound OK? So why don't we just decide that now? Elena, if you could stand up, wave your hand. Let's just agree that the global, no, that one's online, sorry. Can we just agree that if you're interested in the product and tech priorities or the Product and Tech Advisory Council, if that's the topic you're interested in, Elena is going to lead you to another room so that we have space there. So Louise and Vicky Salina, all of you will follow Elena. Not yet, sorry, not yet, not yet. In one minute. I just want to get the logistics because I think when we finish speaking, everybody's going to talk. So Louise is, has the sign. Elena, that group will move to another room. And then if we can actually have the revenue model and financial strategy, I know there's a lot of you sitting at this table, so where's Menar? Menar will know what room to lead everybody to and then this group that is related to the financial model, we're going to move you to another room and then we'll have the remaining four topics in this room. Is that all clear? Does somebody want to ask me a clarifying question? Leila?
Probably not.
Probably not. OK, but hold on, nobody go anywhere yet. Hold on, just one sec. OK. So the last thing that I wanted to say, even though it feels like there's folks here who may or may not want to focus on the Charter itself, I do want to say a few things and then invite Darish, one of our trustees, to offer a bit more detail. I communicated last week that the Foundation had really tried to onboard and hear a number of avenues of feedback related to the Movement Charter and I simply wanted to repeat a few things that I said in that communication so that at least everybody in this room has heard it and maybe we can control some of the misinformation that is happening in other rooms. I want to repeat that the Foundation, which includes the Board of Trustees, is very committed to a Movement Charter. I personally would like nothing more than clearer roles and responsibilities and we want to see that happen. We want to see that happen. We had offered to use the time at Wikimania to really engage in conversations and hear from various stakeholders and that both has happened and is happening. The Board had an opportunity to gather this morning to really think about how to take forward some of the feedback that we have heard here at Wikimania and has proposed that the Governance Committee of the Board, which is chaired by Darish, who will come up in a moment, be an accountable space for us to be able to continue those conversations with all of the stakeholders that are here. And so I just wanted Darish to say a couple of words and then we'll break out into our breakout rooms and we can all answer questions about this or any other topic.
Thank you. I want to start with acknowledging the amazing work that people on the MCDC Committee have done. I think it's been a lot of work, more than we could have ever imagined. Now, the way to move forward that I think we're going to do within the Governance Committee, we want to move quick, but not too quick. What we are going to do is gather feedback from stakeholders. We'll also provide you, the community, with a way to provide feedback. But we're also going to rely on the Foundation resources to sum up the feedback that we already have. And in particular, we want to map the agreements and disagreements between various ideas that were there. So basically, we will map it down, boil it down. And then we're going to propose a process, again transparently and openly with the stakeholders, we're going to propose a process on how to come down, sit at the table and see what can be distilled, what can we take from there. Our view is that we shouldn't wait until 2030 for this to materialize, but we also shouldn't do this like ad hoc today. So I urge you to think, reflect, think what kind of feedback you can provide us with. And over the next couple of weeks, maybe even days, but probably weeks, we'll give you a channel and also start working on this sum up. If you feel like you want to ask me something, feel free to approach me during the break, feel free to join the Charter discussion if this is up your alley. Ultimately, we'll have something that we'll all be proud of, I hope. Thank you.
If this is a topic of interest, Darish and this table will be focused on the Movement Charter. Rosie, if you can raise your hand, that is the table for Affiliate Strategy and Hubs. Next table, Yael and Mike are sitting, that is the table that will focus on the Global Resources Distribution Proposal. Elena is going to lead the way for Product and Tech. Menar is going to lead the way for the Sustainable Revenue Strategy. And then this table here will focus on, we can put the tables together depending on size, will focus on disinformation litigation, trust issues in this very important year of elections. Is everybody clear?
Yes.
Go, go.
Mariana, can you say something about the online participation to people?
Mariana, if you can hear us, there were no instructions to online participation. If you can give instructions to people who want to be able to participate in these discussions, please do so.
Hi there, those joining online, please, you'll be at the hybrid table, which is going to be Table Three, the Global Resource Distribution Committee. So we're still setting up in the room. The feed will switch in a few minutes, so if you hang on online, you'll be joining Table Three, the Global Resource Distribution Committee.
Testing, one, two, three.
Hi, Crystal, how are you? How are you doing? I'm pretty quick, I call you more often.
Mariana, if you can hear us, there were no instructions to online participation. If you can give instructions to people who want to be able to participate in these discussions, please do so.
Hi there, those joining online, please, you'll be at the hybrid table, which is going to be Table Three, the Global Resource Distribution Committee. So we're still setting up in the room. The feed will switch in a few minutes, so if you hang on online, you'll be joining Table Three, the Global Resource Distribution Committee.
Hi, Crystal, how are you? How are you doing? I'm pretty quick, I call you more often.
Oh, Shanee, you're doing it, you're hosting Shanee. You're going to message her to come here.
She's already here.
It comes to the online participants in the morning to say they just tried to join and they're, you're joining through the schedule, they're joining through the platform, so they'll be not in the Zoom, they'll be on Eventbrite, but online participants get a different.
She's the room manager.
Then you're an in-person participant.
Minet is the room manager.
They are online.
Where are they?
I have.
How do we get?
The participants can see you through that camera.
They just want me to.
No, they can type in chat if someone can. Sorry, I knew I thought you were going to do. Yes, you're going to do that. So who's going to bring down nine participants in the chat?
All of the mics, I'm sorry. Just an instruction for the online participants joining Table Three, sorry, in-person participants, you can ignore this, but the online participants joining Table Three, you'll be able to see through the camera the table, at the table, they're all waving at you, at the table, there's a colleague that's going to be, that'll be looking at the chat and relaying that to the table. And I think the one speaker that's joining online is joining through laptop. So I'm going to hand over back to the online table.
OK, so the mics now work in a way that people online will hear us, but not people in the room.
OK, great. So everyone's.
Yes, but whoever's speaking has to talk to the computer, so they have to max.
OK, so I think, Mike, are you going to open this up? But we need to make sure that everyone is away from the mic, which is like a talking stick.
OK, is this going to go everywhere in the room? No?
No.
No, that's OK.
OK.
So our focus is going to be on the proposals being put forward for Global Resources Distribution Committee.
They can't, no, 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 they can't.
You have to speak louder.
I have to talk louder, right. Unfortunately. CO2 is not great in here, but anyway. So our topic is the proposal for a Global Resource Distribution Committee. So at the moment, we have a set of seven regional committees which are looking at how you distribute funding within each region. What we used to have back in the day was the Funds Dissemination Committee, which was looking at the global picture and trying to understand how all the different pieces fit together there. And it seems there's kind of between the two, they both work very well, but there's a mismatch between what they're able to do, that they can't look at a global perspective from regional groups. So what we're looking at is doing some refinements to the individual groups, which hopefully Yael can explain, but also having more of a global body which is looking at what makes sense for distribution, what makes sense for not just sharing money, but also sharing responsibility, sharing responsibilities for doing things around the world and looking at how that is going to be most effective, not just, or not having Foundation doing everything, not having big affiliates doing everything, but sharing roles, sharing responsibility, and doing that in an equitable and fair way. So I hope that's a reasonable introduction. Yael, do you want to?
No, I think we have a whole session, we have a whole session on this topic. Sorry, I'll take my mask off. We'll have a whole session on this topic at 5:00 PM today. Anyone who would like to join is welcome. We're particularly interested in hearing from regional fund committee members, former FDC members, and affiliate EDs or affiliate staff, but it is open to anyone. And I think the purpose of today is just to hear what you have to share, particularly with both Mike and Shanee here as representatives of the Board.
Hi.
So, hi, my name is Mace.
I think you would try to focus on.
The other ones?
Comments.
No one. OK, so let me start with saying that I do have reservations about this committee in proposed form. However, the last two days have gave me also a bit of hope that it can work and it can be a thing that is better than the current system and I would like to work on making it better. One thing that is important for me to move to the Board members and to Foundation in general is that I do hope that this committee will be able to solve one particular problem and it is regional resource distribution. I come from a region that is Central Eastern Europe that last year simply ran out of money. During the financial year, the budget for grants have unexpectedly ended and the committee members had to spend a few months without access to rapid grants. This was fixed by the Foundation a bit with the help of the CE Hub. However, I do hope that this committee would, while regional funds committees look at the money being available in the Iran region, I hope that the Global Resource Distribution thing, let's call it something shorter, a committee, will have a global overview and could advise or even be allowed to move the money around. Because we may have a year when, for example, Sub-Saharan Africa needs twice as much money as they got and we may need a year when, for example, people in Asia just don't spend enough and we can transfer that money to them. So it would be great if there was one group that has a global overview, sees everything per money. Second thing, they could also compare programs between regions, which is something that we are now lacking severely. We have programs running in different countries, different regions, but we do not compare how effective they are. Thank you.
Could someone start an Etherpad? Or you are? Amazing, thank you, thank you so much.
I'm also listening in country.
Yes. If you send, if you send me a link, I'll take notes with you.
Can I just give a response to that, that one thing to bear in mind is that we do have a limited amount of resource, that it's not going to continue increasing exponentially. So it's always going to be trade-offs between if we do this, what do we not do in place? And that's something we need to consider across regions. If we want to increase funding for Global South, which is my understanding we do, that means Global North has to have less money through central processes, which is different from raising funds within own regions and figuring out ways of getting large grants, getting small grants within those areas, working with governments and other things. So it's a whole big picture that all needs to link together. And also, I think it's important to bear in mind Wikimedia is in a really good position because there's quite a bit of money compared to what we're asking to do. If you look at astronomy, which is a field I'm in, maybe 10% of grants get funded and that's about it. Here, we're in a much better regime where most grants get funded, but we're still getting to the point where everyone's growing, everyone's adding staff, everyone's doing more and the pot is staying the same or increasing slower. So we will need to bear that in mind. I just wanted to add that for context.
Yeah, I kind of want to.
Do introduce yourself as well.
Yes. Hi, I'm Andrew, I'm from WikiLeaks Journal, but my daytime job is working in the government. So when I hear that, like when a hub runs out of funds or another hub has substantial amount of leftover money, I would actually see that as probably just a poor management of the overall budget. And that means if this was to be resolved, there needs to be the fund managers across different hubs to actually communicate and say like, I have this much money left or I am in deficit of this much and so that they talk to each other and try to figure out if there's a way to transfer the funds over so that there won't be a shortfall or a substantial leftover that gets clawed back by the Foundation at the year end. So kind of going back to my own point, I really, I see there is a need for the Global Distribution Committee because some projects that are funded are global in nature, like WikiLGBT, a Wiki Woman, those are, those are focusing on like across nations or even across continents and using the current regional hub funding model, those don't work because it may cost a lot of money to run events in central, relatively central and East Europe. It might cost even more if you're running in some areas in YSEP, but a lot less within YSEP itself. So and how are you going to apply which pot of money when your event is global, when your, when your target audience is global?
I think it's also, sorry? OK, sorry. Hi, it's Ayla from Wiki in Africa in Cape Town. I think it's also important for the Wikimedia world to have kind of like standards, like almost like a database of how much things cost in different places and what the, you know, what the limitations and what the issues are. So like obviously putting events on or holding meetups or holding those kind of things. So we have like a better understanding of kind of like the, you know, if we were going to start another, how much they would need in order to get started or what, you know, so it allows for the movement to budget, you know, exponentially across like scope and scale so as well, because then we can gather those kind of information, that kind of information together.
So weird to talk into the microphone and it not get louder. It's very trippy. Ayla, do you imagine that to be a role for this global committee or could you imagine that being a role for each regional committee to put together?
So I think.
I think it's also important for the Wikimedia world to have kind of like standards, like almost like a database of how much things cost in different places and what the, you know, what the limitations and what the issues are. So like obviously putting events on or holding meetups or holding those kind of things. So we have like a better understanding of kind of like the, you know, if we were gonna start another, how much they would need in order to get started or what, you know. So it allows for the movement to budget, you know, exponentially across like scope and scale as well because then we can gather those kind of information, that kind of information together.
Yeah? So weird to talk into the microphone and it not get louder. It's very trippy. Ayla, do you imagine that to be a role for this global committee? Or could you imagine that being a role for each regional committee to put together?
So I think it's a funnel, yes. So I think it would be something that the regionals would gather and then collectively the global would make the, you know, would have the resources and be able to make decisions globally because they would then have information from each space. So I mean, we've all been hit by, you know, by cost of living explosion and then all of those kind of things, but also exchange rates fluctuate hugely. And then that also impacts like what was cheaper last year is no longer cheaper. There's a whole range of different things. And I think if we have that information being fed constantly, we're more agile.
Thank you, Machee here again. This is a question and also a proposal. Some of the issues with grant making in the Wikimedia movement currently come from a difference in financial years between major organizations and Wikimedia Foundation. This cannot easily be changed because it would not be good for the foundation to change it. And for example, in Poland, this could not be changed at all.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding. You're saying that the Wikimedia Foundation's fiscal year is on a different calendar than affiliates' fiscal year?
Yes, exactly. And that leads to where the affiliates are applying for money, especially in the winter round. It's the middle of the foundation financial year. So one thing that this committee could take a look at once formed is either changing the timelines of the grant system and accelerating it, in my opinion, to a way that when foundation is planning its budget for the financial year, they already know how much the affiliates are going to ask for. Because currently, we are in a system where the foundation is planning the budget. They do have the budget approved and then affiliates start asking. Yes, and the foundation can reasonably say, well, we didn't plan that much or this year we planned too much, let that be a problem. But because of this change, because of this lack of overlap in financial years, additional planning needs to be involved, unfortunately adding overhead and bureaucracy for the affiliates, but could lead to better transparency, understanding of the system.
I'm Delphine. I was a member of the FDC. I was then supporting staff to the FDC, the Funds Dissemination Committee. And yes, I've been involved in governance and grants for quite a long time. I think that, to answer your thing, I think that even beyond what you're proposing, which is, and I'm pointing to Ayla, proposing which is a database of how much things cost, I think it's about the strategy of where do we want to invest our money? And I'm not even talking about the, I'm not even talking about the impact. I'm talking about the fact that so far, we've tried to impose on the rest of the world the idea that it takes a few volunteers to grow, to learn, to become a chapter, et cetera, et cetera, when I think that in many, many countries in the world, it's actually not the way we should have been working, but we should have invested in actually actively developing chapters or groups or whatever you want to call them on the ground, probably partnering with people in the countries that were interesting for us as a movement, rather than just say, okay, let's have first a little grant, then a bigger grant, then a bigger, bigger grant, then a much bigger grant, et cetera. And I think that's something that we really need to look at and that this body should really think about. If it happens, it's really about thinking, we do have the northern chapters or the western, whatever you want to call it, Global North, that already are established, et cetera. And we are kind of expecting everyone else in the world to have the same kind of growth thing. And I think it's actually a mistake. I think we might be able to invest 100,000 in a country that has very, very little community to actually grow that community and to take advantage of, again, existing partners that do things that is aligned with our work. But that might be, don't have the time or the resources or the cultural kind of background to be volunteers and grow something to be a bigger thing. So that's one of the things that I think is very important.
Just to respond to that if I can, that I think even within Europe, there's different contexts. So not everyone's been Wikimedia Deutschland. And I think it's one of the strengths probably of the regional committees, that they do hopefully understand better the local context and understand what will work in different regions in a way that cannot be done so well on a global basis, which led to the Brazil and India experiments that were disastrous and things like that. So I think the combination of having the global and the local really might help here.
Okay, my name is Teslim Abukarim from Nigeria. Teslim Abukarim from Nigeria. So sorry, I joined in late, so but. Okay, you can't hear me. Okay, I get that now. Okay, my name is Teslim Abukarim from Nigeria. So I would like to contribute as regards the annual planning and funding and all that. So one of the things I would like to propose is that there should be a kind of aside all these affiliates conference, maybe YSEP, Wiki in Daba and all that, there should be a kind of collaboration whereby we should have a kind of mixed conference whereby it's especially closer regions. So instead of we having just Wiki in Daba and YSEP or from the dual band conference and all that, we should have a kind of mixed one. For instance, any other continent very close to Africa, we can have a kind of meetups. Then that way, we would get to understand ourselves better. We know how the things are in my region. You know how things are in your own, I mean, I know how things are in your own region. You know how it is in mine. Then whenever we want to plan and all that, then we can actually put that together and submit it to the foundation. That could be a kind of way in helping with funding, in helping with collaboration, in helping with managing resources as well.
I wanted, Crystal, Kritzolina on the Wikis, I wanted to add on also on what Ayla said about this cost of living, but I don't think it's just the costs of the things. It's also what is needed in different countries to run programs. For example, there's a lot of countries where for volunteers, having enough internet data to upload pictures is expensive, while in other countries, you just normally have this as a normal person. And it's not necessarily countries in the Global South versus Global North. But I know in Bangladesh, internet data is pretty cheap, while in India, the neighboring country, it can be horribly expensive. And so also knowing that getting to a venue safely, transport is very different. It's no issue to take a bus in Germany. It's a real issue to take a bus in India for a woman. So having also a list of those things that are needed when you run a program. In addition to that, what does it cost? Because if we run this in a way that, also security for conference venues are very different, what is needed in Germany, I don't need a lot of security. I need some security or here in Poland. In some other countries, I might need a lot more security. So also having an idea of just what is needed to run good programs, I think is very important.
Online question. On behalf of Chipmunk Davis, from the proposal, it is unclear how the new global body will interact with the regional bodies. If the regional fund committees are still handling individual grant proposals, how involved is the global body in that? What is the scope of their monitoring review activities?
Thanks for the question. So the first thing I'll say is the proposal does not sketch out everything. It's intended to be a skeleton. And this is the work, I think, of us and the movement to decide. What we have proposed is that the global committee be responsible for things like global programmatic metrics. What are we as a movement trying to achieve? Setting standards across regions and dividing, I think this gets to your point, Andrew, understanding how much budget should go to each region. The proposal for the regional funds committees is that we change them a little bit in the sense that we run elections so that the committee members are not appointed by WMF staff, but rather elected and therefore accountable to their communities. But those regional funds committees would still be the primary committees responsible for reviewing grants. So to make it really specific, the global committee would not review individual grants. Regional committees would still review individual grants. The global committee is taking on the big picture, how much each region should be allotted each year? How do we think about global thematics and grants that aren't regional by nature? And thinking about standards and metrics and guidelines across the whole globe.
Hello, I'm Lina, the new head of the Colombian chapter. Nice to meet you all. I'm also new to the movement. I came from the humanitarian work scope. I want to say two things and adding up, English is not my first language, so bear with me. Adding up to the cost of things and the specific needs of things. I also think that we have to take into account what are the aims of the breaches that we want to close in the overall conversation between the Global South and the Global North? And also, I want to know if you, if this committee will foresee that if we are fixing problems, like we are, or we are looking in advance and foresee, for example, and I work in climate change and I really care about that, how that global themes and global problems will affect the distribution of resources?
So my observation, so I'm Jenny. I come from the US and work on different projects, one involving credibility, one involving taking pictures. So my main observation is that in terms of the Global North or at least the US, there is other funding out there. So it does, at least in theory, the US affiliates do not have to depend on the foundation. I know WikiEd kind of does that, but there's a lot of confusion sometimes from funders, the foundation versus affiliates. Also, I can say that some of the US affiliates, that at least the geographic ones, are not mature enough to take like large grants, but they probably can get there. So I think there needs to be sort of support or endorsement from the foundation in a more structured way. And also kind of like to at least minimize the sense of competition because you got the, oh, we already donated to Wikipedia thing when you're trying to talk to them about a more grassroots project. So in terms, I don't know if that's a global council kind of level thing or that's more of a, like a US level thing with the foundation. But the idea is you can wean at least some of the Global North organizations off of money coming from the foundation. That can be invested in places where there's just not enough philanthropic dollars to go around.
Jenny, I think that's a great point. And North America and Europe are the two regions where we really find this is that while we are saying, and as Mike said, like these are areas where affiliates can and should be raising their own funds, there is an unfair element of competition that comes up where people are going to WikiEd, you know, WikiEd is going to grant maker and they say that we already founded the foundation. So what we have done this year is, she started on Monday, is hired an affiliate training, affiliate fundraising training consultant. And her job is to work with affiliates who are interested in fundraising and help them build their own fundraising capacity. And one of the goals that we've asked her to come up with is laying out guidelines for how we collaborate and don't poach funders so that it's very clear kind of how we can collaborate with affiliate entities as we say, you need to be raising your own funds. How do we support that and come alongside that? So I think very well taken.
Yeah, so.
And I was next in the queue. I actually don't think that there is so much funds available for everyone out there. I don't think that's, can, I would be actually interested that you listen to me when I say this. So I actually don't think that there is, there are funds out there for the stuff that we're doing. I think supporting communities, Wikimedia communities, if there were real funds, we would have found them by now and we haven't. There is a philanthropic, very US-centric or even, I want to say Anglo-Saxon kind of way of doing funds, which works a bit in the US, but it doesn't work everywhere else. Wikimedia is not interesting to the EU, et cetera. So we will find funds. I think that a good example is Wikimedia Sweden, for example, but they have always done projects that are kind of on the side. So yes, we can also always do projects on the side. We will have thematic, as you were saying, thematic funds. We might find money for that. But I don't think that the very core of our being, which is supporting communities to actually participate in the project is something that can be funded by anything else than us. And I am very, very clear about this. I think it's been 20 years like this and I don't know how it's going to change. There is an actual essay by Sue Gardner a very long time ago, and as much as Sue is not my favorite person in the world, she did write something about the fact that our funding model, which is funding by little people, by people like you and me, who put 20 bucks to actually support Wikipedia, is probably the only viable funding model, et cetera. So I think that while I do believe that for, again, thematic things, you might find the climate change, whatever, will actually support a few chapters to do things, et cetera, well, and things like this. But at the end of the day, it is always going to be the small people supporting the small people doing Wikipedia. And for this, I think that it's really important that we start thinking, how do we make sure that the people who support us on a day-to-day basis, the $20 person that gives $20 to Wikipedia, you know, how do they feel that they are really represented across the world? Not just in the countries where they are, et cetera, but really that they, that they find this kind of loyalty with Wikipedia. We help them through, we help them through college, we help them through school, we help them to like getting an education and things like this. How do we make sure that we keep this conversation going with them and say, hey, can you support us longer and further for the things that we're doing? So I want to be very, very careful about the whole Global North, Global South, et cetera, et cetera. I do believe that this is something to keep in mind.
So I think it's important to bear in mind, there are, in each country, there's going to be some sort of centralized funding, some sort of government funding available for things. That may not be much in some countries, but there's always going to be some processes there. Within EU, there are standard processes for applying for grants. It becomes a lot of paperwork, a lot of bureaucracy, but they do exist if we wanted to go down that route. The advantages as well of working on a national basis are that you get contacts. So you get to know people in these funding agencies, in the governments, in the philanthropic organizations around it. And that can lead to in-kind things and contact with others and everything like that. There's a whole network that we're taking advantage of there, which can only be done locally, not on a global basis. This is not to say that the online donations are unimportant or anything like that. They're hugely important, but I think we do need to consider diverse funding streams here as well. And the advantages of local fundraising and local context is really important.
I'll just answer to make it very clear. To me, it's about the core funding of core communities. That's it. Like anything on the side, fine, but this, like the work, the basic, the day-to-day work.
Sorry, can I, I'm gonna add to that because I have like 12 years experience, well, 14 years experience of this. And essentially, coming from Africa, there's a very, they're all, almost all the funding is directed towards very basic, you know, life-threatening stuff. And so us going in and going, hey, we want to make the world a better place because it's a very niche, very exclusive space for them because it's the high end of education. They're looking at the three hours at the moment, you know. So I think it's, yes, it is a good idea to have local funders and whatever. And the only things that we've been able to get is partial project-specific funding. We can never get organizational funding. Getting, negotiating over five years to get organizational funding was a game changer for us from the Wikimedia Foundation. They didn't do it before because the, anyway, the changes within the Wikimedia Foundation have been absolutely critical for us. And it's always on a good, it's been a much better trajectory. So that's the answer to that one. But I also just wanted to ask, I know that it's, obviously, this is a board. But I also just wanted to ask, I know that it's, obviously, this is a board implementation from, for the Foundation, but there are other players within the, within the movement that also fund. And some of that, and I'm only talking in like details, because that's just what occurs to me now, but it doesn't have to be limited, as in the cost of living thing. But that collaboration between, and I know there is communication between, but it allows people to, you know, go and ask Wikimedia France for a grant, and then come to you guys, and then go to somebody else, and then, you know, and, and that, that collaboration, that like oversight needs to probably be tightened down a bit more.
I also want to hear from Sandro, as a former FTC, or no, sorry, not former, but you run the Grant Making in Wikimedia Deutschland, so I don't want to jump your queue, but before we wrap, I want to make sure we hear from you as well. Just, just.
I'm asking whether that would be.
Can I just very quickly read, just answer to that, that I think we need to explore those options here, that we need to be all on the same table, we can't have fund shopping. So having, I, this is a proposal, it is flexible, we can adjust it depending on what we think we need. So do raise that on Wiki, and do try to bring people who are doing funding elsewhere in the movement to this table and discuss it. Things are, can change, basically, are open for discussion.
Let's hear and then not respond, if maybe, because we have only three minutes and three people.
Okay, I'll make this very short. For whatever the mechanism it is, just be mindful that there are, like, as what Delphine said, it's a lot of grassroots movements, so a lot of them do not have experience writing grants before, and it becomes a chicken and egg cycle. You do, you are not able to hire someone to, who has experience writing grant, because you were not successful in getting grants. And it's not just a Global North, Global South thing, even in Canada and US, there are tribes and indigenous organizations who likewise are in the same situation. So yet, they are often the ones that are on the ground and able to effect the biggest change, and whatever mechanism we need to remember that.
Sandro from Wikimedia Deutschland, thank you very much for this point. I also want to go to this problem. When we are supporting volunteers at Wikimedia Germany with grants for their own projects, for their ideas, we learned it's very important to help them to, to get to a good grant, to a good request of a grant. That's not easy. Also in Germany, a lot of volunteers have great ideas, but they don't know how to get a concrete idea of how to solve the problem they see, or how to make the project as good as they can do it. And a lot of people don't know how many does a project can cost, and they need the help. And looking at the bigger picture for the Global Resource Distribution Committee, it is important to help the people with any kind of resources, learnings, resources to talk to each other, learn from each other, do capacity building to this important point.
To wrap up, Crystal, Krizalina, again, I would just like for the Global Dissemination Committee, or whatever we are calling it, sorry, I'm bad with those names, perhaps to also keep an eye on the landscape of what kind of external funding is possible in the region. Because I think in Europe, there are just more possibilities to do this external funding. I mean, Wikimedia Switzerland is getting.
That's the worst example?
Yeah, but that's, yeah. But also Wikimedia Germany gets some external grants, a lot of the European chapters get. That's also, that's, again, but that's, there's just more possibility to also raise money themselves. And so I think that is also something that perhaps this committee could keep track of. And if they see a disparity also of, there are chances, opportunities, possibilities, but the people on the ground can't take them for the reasons you just mentioned, to develop that capacity in the region, to get grants for site projects, for extra things. And so I think that could also be something that this council could be doing.
I will be quick, sorry. I just, I had a conversation with David about onboarding people through Rapid Grants. And actually, you know, the ASAP, ASAP and Jumis funnel of onboarding people better in, onto the communities as editors, we were talking about doing a similar thing for onboarding organizers in their grants program, like, they almost have to go through like a mini, a mini certification program in order to then, you know, qualify. And that might be one way of doing it, so that people come into the grants program with a much better idea, but you can also get local knowledge and draw local knowledge. And if that is a, becomes a global program, then that obviously benefits everyone, you know? So those are kind of like decisions that can be made at a meta level that can then filter down.
Okay, as regards, as regards getting grants, I think I've, I've gotten a few, and I've gotten rejected for a few too. So I kind of have experience with grants and all that. My suggestion would be that, because I've seen some people that are actually very cool and okay, but they couldn't get grants because they were blocked indefinitely. And some of them, it's not like maybe they make disruptive editing, some of them were blocked for something like socket stupidity, WikiLeaks data. And I have like two or three people from my community that are currently on that, and they were blocked like unjustly. It's not like maybe they have two accounts and all that, so that is really affecting us in my community. Then some of them don't even know that there's means for them to get grants. Because I have like 34 people that I am, I'm the one that I, I trained, kind of trained them on my own personal grant that, okay, you can actually apply for some of these things. While about four, five of them get, about two of them didn't get because of this blocking that I said. So like, we should, I'm, I'm not like a really old body in my community, I'm a board member for Wikipodia Medicine. However, I took it upon myself, we should have a kind of body in each region that would actually train people, aside communicating with our grant manager via emails, there should be a kind of meetups, meetings with participants, editors, on how to, they can actually apply for this grant. Thank you very much.
Yeah, so I think we'll leave it there. Thank you very much, everyone that's come. Sorry, I forget. Thank you for everyone that's come, we'll leave it there. There is the OnWiki page, so do go and comment there, join the conversations. I think there's going to be the meetup.
Come at 5:00 PM tonight, if you'd like to join. The room is listed on Eventy and on Meta. Yeah, yeah, we'll figure out if we can do.